Good morning Birmingham. Today is Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. The time is 9:31. I call to order the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Birmingham, Alabama. We will have our invocation led this morning by Major Robert Lyle, Greater Birmingham Area Commander of the Salvation Army of Greater Birmingham. And pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Clinton Woods. If you're able and willing, please stand. Thank you.
Let us pray. Our Father, it is good to call on your name today. You're the name that's above every name, and you're the Creator of all things, and we thank you for that. Lord, we are blessed to be called your children. And Father, your children comes in all shapes and sizes. Your children come from all walks of life, and we thank you for that. Lord, we thank you that while we were yet sinners, you provided a way. We thank you that while this community is a shining light in the state of Alabama, we know that we can do so much more. So Father, I pray your anointing upon our city council, every member of it, Father. Father, I don't know many of them personally, but what I do know, Father, it takes the servant's heart to serve. So I pray, Father, for anointing of each of these. Father, I pray that they will look past politics and look at how they can better serve this community. Father, we pray for the violence to stop in this city. We pray for deaths to be removed from the streets. Father, we continue to pray that our light as Christians and as fellow laborers will continue to shine in such a way that others will be able to see that there's hope, and that hope is beyond measure, and we thank you for that. Now, Father, as we have many men and women in this room today, many of them have stood on foreign soil, may still be a part of the military. Father, we want to thank you for our veterans and for the safety that's provided by our military, by our police officers, our fire department, and even the city council, Father. We pray that whatever is discussed today will be God honoring. We pray that our nation will return to an understanding of where so much better when we let you be our foundation. Now, Father, in this room today, if there's any man or woman that does not know the love of God, I pray that today they'll experience that through the touch of a brother or sister that's in this room. Now, Father, the Apostle Paul says that we need to rejoice, and he said, again, I say, rejoice always. So Father, we do rejoice for this Thanksgiving season that we have coming up. We pray for those that will be without. And Father, we pray that you will send those who are in need to organizations that can help. Now, Father, again, we don't want to just slip by Thanksgiving. We want to be thankful for what you've blessed us with, a great country, a great state, a great city, and, Father, great people. But Father, we don't want to lose sight that Christmas is about celebrating the joy that's found in Christ. So Father, may the peace of God that surpasses all understanding guard our hearts and our minds in Christ Jesus, and we ask this in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Major Lyle, for that prayer of Thanksgiving and our reminder of the service of our first responders and those who served our country, and your prayer for each of us this morning. At this time, Mr. Clerk, good morning. You'll call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Morning, sir. Councilmember Tate.
Morning.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tem Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Allison.
Good morning here. At this time, the minutes are not ready for June 21st, 2022, through November 8th, 2022. Good morning, Deputy, I mean, Joint Chiefs, excuse me. I know that the mayor is in Washington, DC, but do we have any communications this morning?
We do. Good morning, Madam President, Madam Pro Tem, to the members of the council and to the members of the public. Madam President, right now, actually Mayor Woodfin is representing our city, as you said, in Washington, DC, as he speaks at a congressional hearing on developments in state cannabis laws and bipartisan cannabis reform at the federal level. He'll be coming up very shortly. During the hearing, Mayor Woodfin will urge Congress to pass common sense reforms that will expunge criminal records, normalize banking and financial services, and expand, excuse me, expand the ability to research cannabis. National Recycling Day, today is National Recycling Day. We want to take a moment to remind our residents about the importance of being good stewards of our planet by recycling their waste. Americans send 64 tons of waste to landfills during their lifetime. That's 246 million tons of waste each year. We can all do better. I want to thank our dynamic men and women in the Department of Public Works who work tirelessly to keep our community clean, and they help facilitate our recycling program. Almost done, Madam President. Lastly, I'm excited to announce that the City of Birmingham, in partnership with the Affordable Connectivity Program, an education superhighway is presenting Connect 99, an awareness campaign to inform residents about a federal subsidy that can be applied towards internet service. The Affordable Connectivity Program provides eligible households with $30 per month towards high-speed home internet service, making some of those plans free, actually. Additionally, eligible households will receive a one-time discount of up to $100, excuse me, to purchase a laptop, desktop computer, or tablet from eligible providers. We know that having the ability to connect to high-speed internet is a basic need, so we're grateful that our federal government is providing this service, and we want to do all we can to make sure our eligible residents in all neighborhoods have access to this resource. Several enrollment events will be planned across the city, including one at North Birmingham Homes at 10 o'clock AM today and Mark's Village at 1 PM. Learn more about them, Connect 99, and the ACP, at birminghamal.gov/Connect99. And on behalf of the mayor, I want to thank our FUSE Executive Fellow, Ms. Anita Lee, for leading this initiative, as well as Ms. Shawna Tates with the Education Superhighway, who is actually visiting our cities to support in kicking off this dynamic campaign. Madam President, members of the council, that concludes the master report.
Thank you very much. We appreciate those announcements and just really want to encourage residents to take advantage of the Connect 99 program. This is something that we want to be sure that all of our families have the resources that they need through the information highway, I want to say, to, again, assist students with their learning and just to connect families to organizations and agencies that may be able to help them. At this time, Mr. Clerk, are there any nominations of boards and agencies?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we'll go ahead and have a reading of the consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items one and two. Page three, we have item number six on consent. Please note the change that we've, well, I'm sorry. We'll get back to this item later on during the meeting.
Okay.
Unless we're going to keep it on, we'll figure that out. Page four, items seven, eight, and nine are on consent. Please add on items eight and nine that they were recommended by Budget and Finance. Page five, we have items 10 and 11 on consent. On item 10, the total amount should change to $10,000, making an additional $5,000 addition from Districts Two, and the ledger account number is 001-000-0422.542.001. And on item number 11, the GL account number needs to be corrected from at the end. Instead of 524, it should be 542. It's 542 instead of 524. Page six, we have items 12, 13, 14, and 16 on consent. Item 15 should be withdrawn due to request of PEP. And on item 12, we're going to also note that that item was recommended by Budget and Finance, and we're going to add a GL account number of 001-010-04200.527.014. That's for item number 12. Page seven, we're going to pick back up with the consent agenda with items 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 22. Page eight, items 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28 are on consent. Page nine, we have items 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34 on consent. Page 10, we have items 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40 on consent. Page 11, items 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45 are on consent. Page 12, items 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50 are on consent. Page 13, items 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55 are on consent. Page 14, the items 56, 57, 58, and 59 are on consent. Page 15, we have items 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65 on consent, and we conclude the consent agenda with item number 66 on page 16.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We'll do that when the item comes up.
All right. Thank you. Councilors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take item number eight off of consent, just to learn a little more about it.
And that's item eight on page four, request is removed from consent. Thank you. Any other items, councilors? Madam Pro Tem?
Can we do item nine too, since they're kind of together?
Okay. Item nine on page four also has been requested to be removed from consent. Councilwoman Woods?
Item six.
Item six has been requested to be removed from consent, and that's on page three. Any other items, councilors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Can I entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
A move.
Second.
All right, Council Williams and Councilwoman Moore. Okay, I'll have to add you, Councilwoman Moore. I heard Council Smithman too, so we'll go with her if I said you're not present. But I'll add you on the vote, so. Voting should start now. How would you like to vote, Councilwoman? Okay. Councilwoman Abbott. Councilwoman Pro Tem Smithman. Thank you, ma'am. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you, councilors. Those items that were considered for consent have been approved. If you were here to listen to any item that was listed on the consent agenda, that item has been approved. We hope you have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. At this time, councilors, I would like to ask, without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules, and I'd like to go ahead and call up item number 67.
All right. Item 67, excuse me, on page 25, a resolution recognizing the outstanding public service and career of U.S. Senator Richard Craig Shelby in appreciation of his conscientious and valuable service during his career as a United States Senator for Alabama. And note that this item is also recommended. We're going to add economic development and tourism to it.
All right, can I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Second. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate you letting this go first. I think that when a senator and initially a congressperson from our area has done so much for this city over their 36 years of service in getting specific allocations to the City of Birmingham through UAB, through Southern Research, through so many different venues, that we take a second and honor his career. I know that there's a lot of allocations that are currently in this upcoming federal budget that he has slated for our city and our metro area, and we are hopeful that we get those, and we appreciate his continued support of the City of Birmingham. So thank you for letting that go first.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that it was really an honor to be with him when we were at the National League of Cities, which was probably his last time meeting with, or one of his last occasions to meet with local delegation. So that was a real treat to see him on his way out in Washington, in his element. Just thinking about his long-term career in Washington, I'm reminded of, you know, the mass transit money he sent down here, you know, for us to have Light Rail instead of BRT, but as a region, we couldn't quite get it together. And, you know, I mean, it was like, I don't know, hundreds of millions of dollars, do you recall?
In today's dollars, it was.
Yeah. I mean, or maybe billions. I don't remember, but we struggled to come up with the local match, and I think some of the suburban communities didn't like that it had to begin in Birmingham, and it was just such a mess for us to get our act together to receive that money. But yes, he's been quite a champion for this area, and so we hope the love continues in some other way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. At this time, councilors, then we're ready for the vote.
And a multitake.
Yes, I see.
Okay.
Aye. All right, thank you, councilors. That item passes, and we do thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for bringing this to us for consideration because, again, we recognize the service and the support that this senator has given to the metropolitan Birmingham area and how we have benefited from it, and so we wish him well as he retires. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk, we're ready now to proceed with the agenda.
All right, we're going to item three first. Let's see here. Item three, a resolution sentencing to the vacation of 20, a 20-foot alley extending from north right-of-way line on Level Court South, northeasterly to the south right-of-way line of 22nd Street South, situated in the north-west quarter section six, township 18 South Range to west Jefferson County, Alabama, on behalf of 22nd Street Partners LLC, owners, in hearing of our support, case number S U B 2022-64. Motion, please.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item was submitted by PIC, and so Councilwoman Smithman, I'll just give you an opportunity to lead this discussion. Okay.
Well, can you go ahead with describing the item, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham, and this is case subdivision 2022-64, and it's a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of 5,741 square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Highland Avenue and Ireland Way and perpendicular to and between 22nd Street South and 11th Court South, so that the owner can consolidate property, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such right as they may have to egress and ingress from their property. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at $42,693.90, and on September 28, 2022, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. On October 4, 2022, the Public Improvements and Purification Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with a favorable recommendation. And that concludes your report.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? Can you come up and state your name and address?
Curtis Eatonman with LBYD Engineers, 880 Montclair Road, Suite 600. I'm here representing the owner for the vacation, request of the vacation of this right-of-way.
Okay, is there anything additional we should know outside of what's missed?
No, ma'am.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here for or against this item in the public? Councilors, do you have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Quinn?
Mr. Gambrell, it's my understanding that for alley vacation to take place, that all of the adjoining property owners have to consent to the vacation?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other councilors? Okay, Madam President, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you very much. We call for the vote for this item.
What is that? Never seen that before.
Is that, I know.
Okay, one second.
There we go.
Can I do it right? Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Are you out?
Yeah.
Down.
All right, thank you, councilors. Item three passes. Next item.
Let's go to item four. Item four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation agreement according to the provisions of Alabama Act Number 1969-916 for a term now to exceed three years of the Geological Survey of Alabama as state agency, granting permission for access by GSA to conduct certain monitoring activities at Roboc Spring, which includes a spring basin, spring run that flows through Hawkins Park and connects to Village Creek, specifically including the conducting of water level, water quality, and water crisis, daughter, population monitoring, data collection activities, and authorizing the mayor to execute any additional documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of this ordinance. This is an item of permanent operation under UC. To pass it today.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Or oppose motion on the item? A move.
Second.
Item listed before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. This is an ordinance authorizing for this interlocal cooperation agreement. Are there any questions, or do you need any further discussion by the city attorney regarding this item? Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Can we dive into it a little bit more?
Yes.
Can we have Attorney Roberts come up and speak?
Yes, ma'am. So that's just a little minor thing that needs to be fixed.
Thank you. Interlocal in the ordinance itself.
The title of the ordinance, I think it's got a missing "a."
Good morning, Attorney Roberts. Good morning. If you could just give us a rundown of what this item is.
Sure, sure. This is an agreement with the Geological Survey of Alabama related to ongoing litigation with the United States Fish and Wildlife, related to the daughterfish at Roboc Springs. The city is represented by outside counsel on that, Ms. Claire Johnson with Boston-Bingham, and she can answer questions if you have any.
Good morning, Attorney Johnson.
Good morning.
Do you have any questions, councilor?
Yeah, I guess specifically, what has the city been accused of doing?
Now, if you have specific questions, this is ongoing litigation. We do need to go into negative session for any specific questions regarding.
Can I just ask her off? Well, I'm good, thank you.
Ask about the recent, ask about what they're doing, not about the past, but you can ask about what she's doing.
You can ask.
Are there any other questions? Yes, councilors.
So, thank you, Madam President. I was just curious, so does GSA have permission to monitor different streams in our jurisdiction, like without this sort of franchise agreement? Or you may not know that, actually.
They have to go through.
It just seems like that's their job.
They have to go through this agreement in order to make sure that the city is on board with them monitoring.
Okay.
So, and because you own the land, and they need license to enter onto city property in order to do the monitoring.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the answer to that clarification was they do have to have, go through this type of a process in order to enter onto the city property or enter into the area. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Abbott?
I'm trying to figure out how to word my question, but this incident, that is the topic of why we're here, okay? It happened a pretty long time ago. So do we expect this to go on for years and years and years, or is there some resolution that we hope to achieve?
Currently enter into tolling agreements that keeps this going on. We hope to have a final resolution.
Because we learned our lesson. We did, we learned our lesson, I know we did. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Quinn.
Yeah, I just wanted to try and help with Councilwoman Clark's question. To my recollection, on our annual basis, I think we approve agreements with these types of entities to monitor, like flood gauges and, you know, various waterways around the city, so this sounds pretty similar.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. At this time, we're ready for the vote. All right, thank you. Item number four passes. Next item.
Item number five, an ordinance issuing a system permit to Neutron Holdings Corporation doing business as Lime whereby the city will grant a non-exclusive franchise to operate a shared micro-mobility device system that public rights away or on permitted public property controlled by the city through June 30, and thereafter for a period of one year from July 1 through June 30 of the following year. Same situation, item of permanent operation under UC. First, to pass today.
Move for unanimous consent?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion on the item?
I move the item.
I think, second.
That was a little loud, so we'll take it.
Dr. Quinn?
Aye.
All right, this is an ordinance before us that would issue a system permit to whereby the city will grant a non-exclusive franchise to operate a shared micro-mobility device system in public right-of-ways. This item is submitted by the city attorney. Any questions or further clarification needed on this item, councilors? Yes, Dr. Quinn?
Just wanted to point out that this did come through the Transportation Committee and was recommended for approval. Also, just wanted to provide a little context, so the company, previously there were two micro-mobility device vendors operating in the city. One of those has since gone out of business, and so it's part of the consideration of Lime here. But also, I just wanted to acknowledge ongoing community concern about maintenance of, you know, curating those devices around the city, and that's something that, as I understand it, Birmingham Department of Transportation is willing to have conversations with the vendors about and potentially recommend some tweaks to our ordinance to help address that
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, ma'am, and Darryl, you might be able to answer this for me, but my understanding is, I get phone calls all the time about a scooter or little bike, whatever they're called, being left either in the middle of a sidewalk or like randomly on like, someone just like kind of ditches it in the street, not on the side, but like in the street, and, you know, people call whatever. It's my understanding that our original ordinance, that they, if the person didn't put it back in an appropriate spot, that there was a financial penalty that the app charges them, and then that the city in return received, is that still in effect?
Yeah, so there's an incentive. Yeah. So, there's an incentive to, for the users to park in certain areas. The, so you get a $2 rebate for your ride if you return it to a designated parking area.
Okay.
We'll say that that technology is not perfect. GPS location services are only accurate within about 30 feet. So, it could still, you know, be in a place that with boots on the ground, you know, doesn't look appropriate. So, I think that's something that will improve as the technology improves. And there is a disincentive if that the vendor, the guys who go out and rebalance the vehicles and replace batteries and stuff like that, if they find a vehicle that's, you know, in an inappropriate location, they can impose a penalty on, on the users. In conversation with the vendors, you know, they tell me that they really have to encourage their staff to, to go through those steps. But we certainly, from the city side, you know, have encouraged them to do that. But again, I think that's part of the reason, you know, why we need to be in conversation with them and consider some, some tweaks to our ordinance. I will say that some of the issue that we've experienced recently is due to the fact that the company that went out of business basically skipped town and, and left all their stuff behind. And so, some of this equipment, you know, that is, you know, down in a creek or, you know, tossed in somebody's backyard is, is actually equipment that was abandoned. So...
Which company was that?
Bolt.
Okay.
Yes.
So, let me ask you, I know you're, I'm sorry for quizzing you.
Sure.
So, this is a generic question, I guess, not just to you. But what, what, what happens if someone takes a vehicle or motorized bike, whatever we're calling them, and, and goes way far out from where the typical service area is and then leaves, leaves it like, just like, you know, in a, on a residential street where no, no person would normally pick it up and use it and take it back to?
Yeah. So, a couple of things. So, if they go outside the service area, the, these companies use technology called geofencing that to alert them of when those vehicles go outside the service area. But, you know, technically, a user can take one of these vehicles anywhere within the service area. There are certain special instances, like, you know, we had a problem for a little while at Railroad Park where we had hundreds of people descending on Railroad Park and, you know, these devices were part of the attraction. So, for, on a temporary basis, there was an exclusion zone. So, if you attempted to, you know, bring a vehicle into that area, it would just shut off on you. And I can tell you that we're talking with Tad Snyder at BJCC. CityWalk is, now has some similar concerns. I think, you know, what I suggested to him is that there's sort of an intermediate step and that they can use the same technology to actually slow the vehicles down to basically walking speed. So, they would still be usable, but they wouldn't be able to achieve max speed. So... But in answer to your question, you know, if they take them outside the service area, the company should be alerted and, and they can locate the vehicle using GPS. But if they, you know, end up in, in Redmont, for example, which I've had some contacts about, you know, it's the responsibility, the company's responsibility to go and retrieve that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about this item?
I just got. Now, what was the?
Counselor Tate?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Now, what was the company you just spoke of? What was it called? Bolt?
Yeah. It was a, the full name of it was Gotcha Powered by Bolt. And they were all over the eastern United States. And literally, folks woke up one morning and they went out of business. You know, employees had the doors locked on them. Equipment was, you know, their spaces that they had leased were, were vacated overnight. And like here in Birmingham, they had their East Coast distribution center over, off of First Avenue South. And, you know, one morning, folk, the neighbors showed up and there were hundreds of bikes and scooters outside the space in the alley. So, it was a interesting situation.
Because I'm just curious to know, like, when companies like this want to settle, you know, in, you know, we're going to use, here in Birmingham, for instance, like what measures is being taken to, to find out, is, is it a good fit, you know, for the city? Because everything looked good, is not good.
Now, we do.
It's not a good fit.
We do have the capacity to impound vehicles. And, you know, we had, prior to passing the ordinance, we had one company that came in and just started to try and operate without a business license or any type of franchise agreement. And so, administration took action to correct that situation, impounded the vehicles. And I think the vendors were, you know, charged something about like $75 per device to reclaim those. So, you know, we do have the capacity to do that. In the ordinance currently, the vendor has 72 hours to correct the situation once we notify them. After that time, we can impound the vehicle and, you know, remove it. I think one of the things that we're going to be looking at in terms of tweaks is reducing that time period. So...
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Abbott?
Since I am so fortunate to live in a neighborhood next to UAB, we have tons of those scooters and bicycles and people leave them. I, you know, it must be a thing. They leave them on the sidewalk. They leave them in the street. They leave them in people's driveways. They leave them blocking people's driveways. So, if you want to back out, you have to run over the thing or, or stop and get out of your car and move it. They're not lightweight. You know, the, the ordinance needs, definitely needs tweaking. Because if the city has to pick all this junk up off the public way, then we should be reimbursed for the cost of having to send somebody to pick, pick it up. And otherwise, if the companies aren't going to take care of their equipment and the people who use it are not competent, maybe it's a service we don't need. Because it, you know, they cause a problem. I know that some people use them to get where they're trying to go, but you, you obviously have people who think it's funny. I guess they think it's funny. I can't imagine that you would just drop things wherever they land and walk off. But they leave them on private property. It's just, I don't, I don't see that it works like we had envisioned. So, I just think it needs some major tweaks because the company needs to be responsible for their equipment. And if they let people use it who are, who are incompetent, inconsiderate, whatever you would like to call it, then the company needs to deal with the problem rather than the citizens of Birmingham having to deal with it. I mean, I got a dash cam for my car just because of the crazy drivers of these things because they don't have to wear helmets. And if you run over them, I'm sure that they'll want to blame you. So, I thought, well, a dash cam is at least, you know, preventative. But, you know, I'm, I'm unimpressed with the service because it's not a very good service.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, as part of, you know, considering tweaks to the ordinance, we'll certainly ask the current vendor, VO, to provide some, some data on utilization. You know, oftentimes, we hear the complaints, but, you know, the calls that are complimentary are extremely rare, in my experience. So, you know, in the lead up to approving the ordinance, there, there was a lot of folks who reached out to me in particular and, and, you know, requested this. So, I, I do think that it does have a positive impact. And, you know, we'll ask the vendors to try and help us better understand that. But, you know, I think your concerns, Counselor Abbott, are valid and duly noted.
Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote for the item. Thank you, counselors. Item number five passes. And we'll look for that help from the Transportation Committee and the city attorney to look at working with those vendors and tweaking, submission for tweaking of the ordinance.
And Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a misspelled word in the title of this ordinance. Also, we need to learn to use spell check, I think. It says assusing, or assusing a system permit. So, you know, it's just like these little errors that we don't want to prevail.
Got you. We'll make note of that. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education in an amount not to exceed $112,727 to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of the students of the Birmingham City Schools. The board will assist with the food insecurity solutions for, and right now it reads, students at Smith Middle School. The allocation is exclusively for the purpose stated. Said funds will come from District One discretionary funds. And to my understanding, there's some corrections or items needing to be deferred.
Yes. Can we go get, get the motion and second, and then we can bring this up for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Williams. You had answered with this item. It's been moved off consent. Would, I said Williams. Would? Sorry.
Yeah. So, needed some amending to the item. We just talked about it in pre-counsel. Didn't appear that anyone was going to make that happen today. But what, how much time was needed on that?
Madam President?
Yes, Chief.
I would hate to put a time limit on it. So, I don't know if the council is comfortable to just withdraw it. But at a minimum, at least allow us two weeks for us to get the stimulus command team to have a conversation with the counselor to discuss if we're changing the funding to ARPA.
All right. Thank you. This particular item needs some additional wording or review by the Strategic Command. And this is an ARPA submitted item. So, that request, then, if the council is in agreement, would we want to withdraw it or you just want a two-week delay to allow that additional review?
I mean, I, you know, this is, this one, yeah.
Good luck.
I'll be good today. I'll move for a two-week delay.
Second.
All right. So, it's been moved for a two-week delay and second.
All right. Abbott, voting should be open. Counselor Member O'Quinn. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. So, item number six has been approved for a two-week delay. Next item.
Should be item number eight, a resolution proving.
And Mr. Clerk, can we call eight and nine together? Would that be okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for and as the said city at redevelopment agreement between the city of Birmingham and NCRC Housing Rehab Fund LLC, under which the city shall convey to NCRC a total of 52 lots located in the Pratt City community at 1430 Pratt Highway, Birmingham, and also award funds under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program in the amount of $2,987,000 to NRC for the development of single-family affordable, energy-efficient houses containing approximately 1,200 to 1,700 square feet of living space. Item nine, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for as the act of said city and affordable housing development funding agreement between the city of Birmingham and Neighborhood Housing Services of Birmingham Incorporated, under which the city shall convey 20 multifamily affordable rental units in the Pratt City area on property located at 1430 Pratt Highway, Birmingham to NHSB, and also award funds under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program in the amount of $100,000 to make needed repairs to the units. Motion for both items.
What are the items?
Second, I think.
Item number four.
Thank you. Items eight and nine. Counselor Clark, you requested, just for conversation about taking these off consent.
Yes. As a daughter of Pratt City, I'm very excited for Ms. Tate. But I did want to just get some understanding of, you know, how the funds will flow through as the 52 lots are being developed. Like, is this, like, what's the structure of it? Before we did it where it sort of bought down the mortgages so that the sales price was more in reach for some of the people who wanted to buy them who couldn't qualify for the full amount? And, and I think that in that case, those were considered market rate. And we, we, we paid and bought down so that there was some affordability mixed in. So, this is purely affordable. And so, is the subsidy going to be in the form of a soft second mortgage for the home buyer? Or is it paying for clearing and grading lots? I just didn't kind of, I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah. So, good morning, Thorsten Snaworth. I serve as Senior Deputy Director of Community Development. And so, this, these two items are twofold. So, the one you're referring to is the development of the 52 homes. And the 2.9 that we're recommending to allocate to NCRC will actually go towards subsidizing the construction. And that's all the way from any infrastructure that's needed to the actual stick construction.
Okay. So, it'll pay out sort of immediately just to help finance construction of the whole site?
Yes. And the CDBGD, our regulations do require us to do it on a reimbursable basis. So, the developer will have to submit an invoice and then we make those payments.
Okay. So, my, I guess my other question is, what is the sales price, your, you know, the range? I guess depending on the size, the range of sales prices that?
Yeah. So, for this development, we're trying to keep it in line with what we've done in the past. So, we're looking at $185,000 to $200,000.
Okay. And that's considered something affordable to people up to 100% of area median income?
Yes.
Okay. 185. Boy, I tell you. See, I'm used to buying those $80,000 houses. It's like, that's a lot of money. 185 to about 200? Okay. I think that's all I had. But, well, since we have the other project, I guess what I would say about both of these is that in the absence of a committee that really just deals with housing, you know, council committee, I believe that these should come to the Administration Committee because they involve the conveyance of real estate and some money. I know they go to finance and budget, but I'm just, I guess I'm saying this to my colleague and not to you. I don't want to hurt, you know, delay these or anything. But I think they should come to the Administration Committee. But I'll defer to the President on that.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Mrs. Snaworth, for giving us the additional information about both of these projects. I know, Counselor Clark, we have entertained looking at additional tweaking our committees. And so, that's something we will put into consideration at the beginning of the year. But when looking at this for administration or creating a housing committee, I do think as we go through, and we're seeing a lot of development within the city and with ARPA and different things we'll be doing. So, that's definitely a good consideration.
Let me just ask, when we, conveyance of real estate, we do, those do go to Administration.
Go through Administration. Correct.
And so, both of these involve, you know, pretty substantial conveyances of real estate. So...
Thank you. That's point.
And congrats to Councilor Tate for this initiative.
Yes. Great news for Pratt City. Thank you. And we, yesterday, we did hear from the developer, and, or just would be working with this, and I just wanted to acknowledge that he's here. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Kelly Gamble with Neighborhood Housing Services is here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, councilors, we're ready for the vote.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Just informed by one of the city attorneys that we need to kind of back up first on these items, both of them, that they are items of permanent operation that should both actually be ordinances, so we need to get a UC for both of them first, and then come back.
I move for UC.
No, we can do both.
I move for UC for both items.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed now.
Move the items.
Yes, amended for the ordinances. You can just mention it.
Okay. Move to amend to ordinances.
Items eight and nine.
Items eight and nine.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. All right, now we're ready for the vote.
Move the items. We've got to move them here.
You got to move them again?
Move them as amended. Did you do that?
I just did. Oh, I thought.
Well, you made the amendment, now we'll move them as amended.
So move, both items.
I'm sorry. Got a second?
Second.
All right. Items as amended. Councilor Moore on the second.
Yes.
Ready to vote on both items as amended, as ordinances, to be ordinances, eight and nine.
All right. Thank you, councilors. So, we've just approved items eight and nine, as we've amended those to ordinances, and we're.
Corrections from the legal department.
We'll get those from the legal department. And again, congratulations, Ms. Tate, and those residents in Pratt City. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Clerk?
Item 15 has been withdrawn, and so, after that, I think we're done with the gentleman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, 68, I'm sorry.
68.
Oh, we did that. Did we?
We did 67.
67, okay. We got 68, which is just emergency repair notice. Item 68, receiving the emergency repair notice from the curating manager relative to the inoperable HU drain and floors at the central library. No action needed.
Ain't no action needed, but I do think there's a question coming to this. Councilor O'Quinn?
So, I did mention this to Chief Mitchell over the weekend when I saw this. So, I just got to go on record as saying that, you know, for equipment of this nature, or whatever is appropriate, I feel like, you know, we should invest in having regular, ongoing inspections of especially mechanical equipment to try and avoid these types of situations. So, just had to say that for the record.
Noted. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Any other items before us? Mr. Clerk?
No man.
All right. Thank you. Councilors, at this time, we'll entertain your comments from each of your districts and highlighting things that are going on in your district. And so, Councilor Woods, are you ready to go first?
Thank you, Madam President. Friday, November 18th, we'll be partnering with Calvary Resurrection Christian Church for a grocery box and turkey giveaway at 10:00 a.m. On Saturday, November 19th, we'll be partnering with Rebirth Christian Church for Thanksgiving Dinner Grocery Giveaway from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our Be Litter Free Pre-Holiday Cleanup will be held this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at Integrity Bible Church. We'll meet there, and then Walk with the Doc will be held on Sunday, November 20th, at East Penson Valley Recreation Center Walking Track at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. East Thomas Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. on Zoom. Evergreen Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. That's on conference call at 952-206-4918. The access code is 223418. Smithfield Estates Neighborhood will also meet tonight. That's also by conference call at 605-472-5447. The access code is 558-467. Sandusky Neighborhood will meet tonight at 6:00 p.m. By conference call, the number is 319-527-9642. And on Thursday, Ennemridge Neighborhood will meet Thursday, November 17th at 5:30. That's by Zoom, on Zoom, sorry. And Enslie Neighborhood will meet Thursday, also at 6:00 p.m. In person at the Enslie Rec Center located at 2800 Avenue K and Enslie. The next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, November 22nd at 1:00 p.m. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, November 17th. Also, on Sunday, November 27th, Pastor T.L. Lewis and the Bethel Missionary Baptist Church will be celebrating their 125th church anniversary homecoming. The celebration will start on this Friday, November 18th, with a red carpet gala and climaxing on Sunday to November 27th, 2022. The address for Bethel Missionary Baptist Church is 1708 Spencer Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama. And also, Madam President, don't forget about the Third Annual Free Christmas Clothing Giveaway, and that's with the Sliders Ministry and the Jefferson County Judges hosting their Third Annual Christmas Clothing Giveaway, and that's going to be, I want to say, at the Found Heights Recreation Center on Saturday, December 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and that's Lois Germany Ministry is the founding owner. Also, I'm going to make this announcement. There will be a town hall meeting to discuss billing issues with the Birmingham Waterworks this Wednesday, November 16th, and that meeting is with the Jefferson County Commissioner, Sheila Tyson, Birmingham Urban League and SCLC. It is going to be at the A.G. Gaston Boys Club from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that's located at 4821 Avenue W. 3528. I highly, you know, would suggest that every council would make every, you know, make sure, try to get this to your constituents to attend this meeting, because I did see something on the news where the Waterworks said that they're going to do some reimbursement, reimbursement of those that they overcharge. And I was reading some information, and I think it's very, very sad that people will charge, overcharge people to estimate people bill based off of, because you don't have enough people in your billing department, or you don't have enough meter readers. And that's just a poor excuse for a company or entity to be operating in that way, charging people excessive amount on water bills because your staffing needs are not met. It's not the people's responsibility because your staffing needs are not being met. Maybe you need to relook at your package, your hiring package, to hire people, to attract people to come to your organizations. And then I think it's also sad if people are, you know, telling people, or leadership, that, hey, something is wrong, and then you retaliate. That's just, that's bad in all practices. Then I think as a counselor going forward, those that we, that people appoint to these agencies do a better job of vetting the people that you appoint to these agencies, too, because you got to make sure that you're getting people that has people's, you know, that you got community at heart and not your own personal interest. And so, we got to do a better job about doing that. So, in my opinion, this is just a sad situation that you're, that's just like, if I go to the grocery store and the cash register go out, I wouldn't want Walmart or Publix to estimate my grocery bill. You need to get it to the pin and tell me what I really owe you. So, we got to really just look at some things, how we do things differently. And so, again, you cannot keep, you know, hiring people on poverty levels and hoping, and thinking you're going to get the best services. That's just, you know, it's 2022. So, we need to be trying to do something different. So, that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Economic Development and Tourism Committee will be meeting today in the council chambers at 11:30. On Wednesday, November 16th, we're partnering with the Star for our District Two Holiday Event, and so that will start at 7:00 o'clock at the Star Church this year, and it is first come, first served, and so we look forward to seeing everybody out on Wednesday evening. That is all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I really enjoyed participating last night in meetings with the Tuxedo and Rising West Princeton Neighborhoods and being represented at the Enslie Highlands Neighborhood. At Rising West Princeton, they were really hoping some of this federal money from FEMA for stormwater management is going to send Moses over to rescue them from the floods in the low areas in Rising West Princeton, so I told them, our fingers are crossed. The Graymont Neighborhood will meet tomorrow night, that's Wednesday, at 4:30 in person at the Smithfield Library. So, please continue to be vigilant as you gather, because there are respiratory illnesses still on the rise. This evening, District Eight residents and leaders are invited to the District Eight Fall Forum at 5:30 at the Five Points West Regional Library. We're going to have an estate planning workshop that will feature tax and legal experts sharing their knowledge, so residents can walk away with concrete steps and contacts to help protect those things that we've worked so hard to acquire. Carolyn Chin of Wild Things will help you ring in the holidays by leading a wreath-making workshop at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens. You can add your own special touches as Carolyn guides you and shares her favorite tips. All materials will be provided. This event is hosted by the Friends of Birmingham Botanical Gardens Junior Board and will take place on Tuesday, December 6th, from 5:30 to 7:00. And the price for this workshop is $50 for members and $60 for non-members, and you can register online at bbgardens.org/wreath. Remember that our rec centers are open. We've got three that are open regularly for the Safe Haven Initiative from 3:30 to 7:30. Mondays is MLK Rec Center, Tuesdays is Central Park Rec Center, Wednesdays the Enslie Rec Center, and then Monday through Wednesday is the Harrison Rec Center. So, please, you know, take advantage of these programs, special offerings for our youth from 3:30 to 7:30 on those days. And if you're looking for a way to stay active and not have to walk alone, if you want to get out and get some exercise, you can come join the District Eight walking group. We meet at 8:00 a.m., or just really a little bit before 8:00, so that we can have an 8:00 o'clock sharp start, and we do about a one and a half mile walk around the crossplex. One of the complications we've had, meeting at Starbucks, is sometimes the lobby isn't open, but when people see us out there, they think the lobby's open, so then they get out of the car, and we have to tell them, sorry, the lobby's not open. So, Starbucks is hiring, so they're really looking for some more employees who are willing to work for, you know, a decent wage of $15 an hour, plus there are lots of benefits. But the shifts start at about 6:00 or 6:30, so they need some early risers out there at the Starbucks so that they can open the lobby consistently. So, if the Starbucks lobby isn't open, you might see us over, kind of over to the side so that we don't cause motorists to get out of their cars. But it's been great fun and a good way to get to know neighbors. Finally, the East Village Arts is presenting a concert to benefit the Ukraine. So, save the date. Come out on Thursday, November 7th at 7:00 p.m. Beginning 6:30, they'll have a potluck slash reception with music, art, food, beverages, art exhibition, poetry, books, and more, and the opportunity to buy and donate to benefit the Ukrainian people. The concert starts at 7:00. It'll feature traditional Ukrainian, Romanian, Bulgarian, and Russian gypsy duets by violinist Ladonna Smith and Alina Tuganova with Mark Shamps on guitar. And if you, this, I mean, the lady who runs East Village Art is a violin virtuoso who plays all over the world, and it's just really a fascinating treat to see her play violin. So, if you're not busy, this is a free concert with opportunity, there's a suggested donation of $10 at the door. After a short hospitality break, visiting poet musician Misha Fegan will perform free improvisations with Smith for the conclusion. Anyway, East Village Arts is, I don't think there was an address, but anyway, it's on First Avenue North, kind of in the 7600 block, and they celebrate freedom and diversity for all peoples. So, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. So, today we have the South Woodlawn, or, yeah, the South Woodlawn Neighborhood Association that will be meeting at the Woodlawn Library at 6:00 p.m. And then on Thursday, the Pineos Vista Neighborhood will be meeting on Zoom at 6:00 p.m. For more information, go to the Birmingham City Council website to find out the details of those different neighborhood association meetings. This Wednesday, UAB Mobile Market will be having, will be in the Norwood Community from 3:30 to 5:30, so make sure that if you're, you know, looking to get some fresh fruits and vegetables, that you go and check them out. This Wednesday, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., the UAB Educational Opportunity Center will be providing services for adults that want to continue their education at the Woodlawn Library. The ELC services include GED assistance, college and trade, school application help, applying for financial aid and scholarships, tutoring and mentoring, and more. Plus, their services are completely free, F R E E, to eligible participants. So, stop by and have your questions about continuing your education answered. This Saturday, November 19th, in Collegeville, Bethel Baptist Church will be having their Chili Cookoff slash Fall Festival, starting at 11:00 o'clock, so, you know, come out, get you some good food, stay warm, and get some good flavors in your life. Finally, well, no, this is not finally, the Magic City Toy Drive is happening right now. Needed donations are new and unopened toys for boys and girls from ages zero to 12, new bicycles, coats, and jackets. Donation sites are at all the police precincts, all the fire and rescue stations, and all the first federal credit unions in Birmingham. Monday, November 21st, the Education Committee will be meeting at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. There are two positions set to expire on the Birmingham Police, Birmingham Police, Birmingham Public Library. And so, if you are interested in applying, please visit birminghamal.gov backslash Boards and Agencies. I put the link in the Facebook chat, or live, whatever. Thursday, December 1st, Volunteer Lawyers Birmingham will be hosting the Woodlawn Wheels Clinic from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. The service is completely free, F R E E, and is on a first come, first served basis. So, if you are interested in having a wheel, please visit vlbm.org or call 205-250-5198. You do have to finish a questionnaire in preparation for the Wheels Clinic, and so make sure that you do those things. Now, lastly, so, this weekend, this past weekend, D4 had an opportunity to do the D4 Ham Giveaway at the Engelnook Rec Center, and I just want to say, you know, thank you to everybody that showed up. We had cars lined up around the whole entire neighborhood. People came out regardless of it being cold and rainy and wet. They was like, we want these hams. So, I greatly appreciate everybody coming out. I do want to give a big shout out to my team for making that possible, as well as the Neighborhood Association Officers in Engelnook, as well as Ms. Shanae Richardson, who is the director of the Engelnook Rec Center, and her team as well. They made, they made the, they made it happen. So, last, the last thing that I do want to say, though, is although I was excited and happy about, you know, each and every person that was able to, you know, come out to receive a free gift, right? Something that was, you know, given on behalf of the generosity of, you know, myself and this council, I was a little, you know, disheartened by, you know, some of the comments that, you know, were made during the actual giveaway. So, my goal, or the office, or the D4's office goal was to make sure that if So last, the last thing that I do wanna say, though, is although I was excited and happy about, you know, each and every person that was able to, you know, come out to receive a free gift, right, something that was, you know, given on behalf of the generosity of, you know, myself and this council, I was a little, you know, disheartened by, you know, some of the comments that, you know, were made during the actual giveaway. So my goal, or the office, or the D4's office goal was to make sure that if anybody showed up, that everybody left with something, right? So that would require that, you know, whether you showed up with five or six people in your car, that you got you a ham and then jumped back in line, right? Because again, the goal was to make sure that if you showed up, you got something. I didn't wanna give 10, 20 hams to one car, you know, and then get to the end of the line and folks looking at me crazy like, "Why didn't I get something?" And so I was extremely appreciative of the folks that, you know, were able to see this as what it was, was a moment of generosity and a moment of, you know, moving in the Thanksgiving spirit and just said, "Thank you," and, you know, jump back in line, right? Because if you did that, then you were able to receive whatever it is that you needed to receive. And so, and so just wanted to say thank you. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilor Abbott?
Mine will be brief. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow is canceled, so you get your time back. Neighborhood Association meeting updates tonight. We have Five Point South Neighborhood meeting at 6:00 PM at the, at the Social Hall of Highlands United Methodist Church. Of course, we still wanna encourage our residents to go to our website. We have placed the two most recent communications from the Water Works on that site, which is www.bhamdistrict3.com. But I just have to make two comments. One is the FEMA grant for stormwater is just going to be a game changer. The fact that we were one of only 20 cities in the nation, and we desperately need help. We have got, you know, countless millions of dollars' worth of storm sewers that need attention because, you know, we all know if it's under the ground, we ignore it until it breaks, and we've got a lot of broken stuff. So I'm really excited about that, and of course, y'all know that I've been keenly interested in the flooding problem at Episcopal Place in the Virginia Sanford Theater because when your buildings fill up with water, people get upset. So, you know, that's under study, and the study is supposed to be complete in December. And then we'll find out how much that's going to cost. And they've surveyed, you know, the entire area because, of course, Caldwell Park can't turn into a lake unless water is flowing into it to turn it into a lake. And we're kind of scared to hear what the price tag is going to be to fix just that one problem. So I'm just ecstatic about the FEMA grant. I don't know how much it, how much it's worth, but whatever it is, it's better than the taxpayers having to pay for all of it. And then the Water Works, you know, I know that every council member has gotten a gazillion complaints as if we are running the Water Works, but we don't run the Water Works. But I am still trying to figure out how Alabama Power and the gas company can remotely read meters and why the Water Works still has a bunch of people driving around in trucks, lifting the lid to see how many spiders are in there, how much dirt is in there. Why in heaven's name have they not gone to remote metering? Can you even imagine the amount of gasoline that they waste driving over a five-county area, checking people's meters? This is insanity. The air pollution alone should make them stop doing it. So I just, that's the one thing, I've read all this stuff about the Water Works, I haven't seen any mention of meter reading, remote meter reading. You know, the Water Works is not a jobs program, it is a public utility. Well, it's not really, but it's close to a public utility. So, you know, my advice to them is change your ways. Come into the 21st century and do things in an intelligent manner instead of the way you've done it forever, because sending people around, driving around in vehicles from house to house is just one of the dumbest things I've ever heard of in my life. And it just, you know, it makes my blood boil to think about all of this anguish that people are going through because the Water Works, you know, can't figure out how to do their business. It just, it just absolutely fries me. But that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Central City Neighborhood Association will be meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at the downtown Central Library. Also, want to remind people to save the date for Sunday, November 27th. City will have its tree lighting here in front of City Hall. There's a festivities start at 4:00 PM, and the actual lighting will be at 6:00 PM. Again, that's Sunday, November 27th, starting at 4:00 PM with the lighting at 6:00 PM. And then finally, won't be able to attend the Town Hall meeting at AG Gassen Boys and Girls Clubs tomorrow night because me and some of my colleagues will be traveling to Kansas City for the National League of Cities City Summit. And Council President, Council Pro Tim, and myself have actually applied for leadership positions within that organization, and just wanna wish us all good luck.
Yes, thank you.
I can, that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tim?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilor Quinn. Yeah, wish us the best of luck. We wanna make sure we put Birmingham on the map for National League of Cities and really see if we can bring some resources back here, really as far as transportation, the environment, utilities, anything else. I look forward to that, and Councilor Tate is actually joining us as well. The Five Point South Neighborhood will meet tonight at the South Hall, Social Hall of Highland United Methodist Church today at 6:00 PM. The next Budget and Finance meeting will be Monday, November 28th at 3:30 PM. Due to the holidays, submissions are due this Monday, November 21st by 5:00 PM. Submissions received after 5:00 PM will be placed on this Budget and Finance agenda. Email submissions to laquia.wilson@birminghamal.gov. With the Water Works Board, I wanna be careful on what I say, but it has been discouraging that a lot of utility companies, they have increased their rates because the Water Works Board is not the only one. I think Alabama Power is attaching $10 more dollar start bill maybe starting next month. You know, Councilor Abbott, I was told that they didn't go remotely with meters because they didn't want people to lose their jobs, but I think at this point, we really need them to remotely read these meters because it's ridiculous that people aren't at their house for a whole month and they're getting charged hundreds of dollars. But I do want us to keep an eye out as a council and administration to make sure that we don't lose this water, because we are at a dangerous rate of losing it, and that is an important asset that we have. So I don't know what we need to do, but I just wanna make sure y'all just keep that at the back of y'all minds and march, because there is a plan for us to lose it. And we know that because we have lost a couple of our representation, actually, because they didn't think we knew how to handle the Water Works Board. But I think this is great for the Town Hall. Thank you, Councilor Tate, for letting us know. And also, District Six will be having our Thanksgiving drive-through this Monday, so if you know anybody in District Six, because I wanna make sure my constituents are able to get a turkey in a box, because we do have other people who are doing it, just please call me at 205-478-4650. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. These are announcements for District Seven. Today, the Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet at the Lifting Christ Worship Center, that's at 6:30 PM. On Wednesday, the West Goldwire Neighborhood Association will meet via conference call at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, November 17th, the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association will meet at 1:00 PM. You can call the D7 Hotline for details at 205-304-1797. The Hillman Neighborhood will meet via conference call, 1:00 PM, and the Germania Park Neighborhood Association will meet via conference call at 6:00 PM. The, on Saturday, November 19th, the Boat, Trash, and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Germania Park North. There are several activities that are going on in District Seven in our Days of Thanksgiving or Days of Giving throughout the district. On Thursday, November 17th, the District Seven Neighborhood Association Presidents will receive the box that they are gifting to a family in need in each of their neighborhoods, and so those will be distributed on Thursday at 1965 Bessmer Road from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So your District Seven Neighborhood President will contact that family, and they'll be able to pick that up on that particular date and time. Also, on Saturday, November 19th, the D7 Thanksgiving Turkey Giveaway will be held. This is our third or fourth annual. This will be at First Baptist Church of Roosevelt City at 6012 Malcolm Avenue, Birmingham, 35228. That's 10:00 AM until supplies last. So I have to reflect on Councilor Moore. That's why we stopped saying from 10:00 to 12:00, because we don't want anyone coming up at 11:00 and 12:00, and they've already been distributed. So starts at 10:00 until supplies last. We are asking one turkey per household. There are several other opportunities for giving that are also being held in District Seven on the 19th. The Greater St. John Baptist Church, they're giving out food boxes and turkeys, and the D7 Office is supporting that. And then I understand that the McClure Family, they're having their annual turkey giveaway, I believe it's either Jones Valley or the Powderly Neighborhood in D7. So we thank all of our community partners that are providing these opportunities of giving for families within the district and throughout the city, so we thank everybody for that. Also, do wanna thank Councilor Tate for bringing up the information regarding the Town Hall that Commissioners Tyson is holding over at the Boys and Girls Club, and I believe that's Wednesday, and so we'll be placing that, I think the majority of us will be placing that information for our residents for that Town Hall and public meeting, so that residents can voice their concerns and issues regarding that. As has already been mentioned, some councilors will not be in attendance because there is travel to the National League of Cities, so just wanna let you know that those of us who are not present, we are with you in spirit because we do have to attend that meeting at that time or have made plans to attend that meeting. All comments regarding the Water Works Board and what's going on, just with the Water Works itself, of course, our residents, we wanna be sure that our residents, these are ratepayers, and they must be treated fairly. And with any company, it's important that that company is managed in order to treat the ratepayers and treat our residents, and use the best system possible to make it affordable and fair for our citizens. So appreciate all those comments, and I think you understand the feeling of the council as it comes to this issue, so thank you very much. At this time, councilors, if we don't have any other comments, we will have our speakers' list, I believe we have two speakers that have signed up, and I may have to leave a little early, so I do wanna go ahead and acknowledge our officers on duty, Cedric Pinkert, Derek Square, and Fred Wesley. Thank you for your service today. And I also want to acknowledge one of our D7 clergy members, Pastor Brown with West Hills Baptist Church, and thank you very much. All right, Mr. Clerk, thanks.
William R. Muhammad. William R. Muhammad, 411 Loraine Street, Sherman Heights Neighborhood. I did choose the right day to come down here. I wanted to talk about the People's Town Hall meeting Wednesday at 6:00 PM, but you're well aware of that. I had some demands that I wanna make at that meeting. The number-one demand is that a public hearing should be accommodatable to the people who are coming. I know for a fact that that meeting at the Birmingham Water Works, you can only get five or six of the public in there. Most of the people who fill that space are vendors, are people who come there every time they have a meeting. I know that Ms. Tyson asked them to move the meeting somewhere to where the people could come in, particularly in a crisis situation like this. My other demand is this. I came up here last time and I was talking about money in black banks and the Water Works taking money out of black banks. Now, there's a 7.5% sewer collection fee. It's the law. The first thing I did when I was on the board was I moved with Ron Williams and George Monkus to say we would discontinue the contract with the county to collect sewer for them. They came and met with us. I said, "Okay, we don't have to discontinue it, I'm just asking you, don't make us cut people's water off if they can't pay their sewer." They said, "William, it's nothing we can do about that, it's the law." I also found out that 7.5% sewer rate, the rate should be between 1% for collection from the Water Works to 10%, and if you don't agree, it defaults to 7.5%. It's the law. Now, the county is pushing for the city of, for the Water Works Board to reduce the amount of money they're getting from them, and they do have our representative at the county thinking that's gonna lessen the bill. No, the bill is being paid before it's collected. That's something I fought for for four years. How can we pay them as bill, not as collected? So that's one of the things I wanted to say, because they are pushing for that. I'm saying that because any of you who have friends over at the Water Works Board that's going around telling people that we took money out of black banks because we didn't wanna charge higher interest rate, then how can you not, I mean, we didn't wanna charge people a higher bill, how can you say that when you're gonna reduce the amount of money you're getting from the county, when the county is going up 3.5% every year on the sewer rate for 40 years? Never heard of in the history of financing, but yet you gonna let them tell you you need to take down the rate? You guys see what I'm saying? That rate, that the bill in the sewer is gonna go high every year for the 40-year period, but yet you asking the Water Works to take less money, and our people over at the county think that that means they're gonna get a lesser bill. That's not true. So in conclusion, I wanna thank the councilwoman who made the comment, because the big picture is the Republicans already have a bill in, that they're getting ready to produce to take control at the Birmingham Water Works, de facto. They got control now. If you read and listen to what I say and read what I write, they got control now, but it's gonna be de facto controlled. In closing, Dick Arrington said, every year that he was mayor, they introduced a bill to take over the Water Works. That was 20 years. We found two bills, one during the time of Mayor Kincaid and one before then when they did that. So that's the big picture, that's the goal. And when we talk about, well, they should do this and they should do that, I'm closing on this note. Meters is like my grandfather used to say, is closing the barn dough after the horse thing got out. It costs $350 per meter. Birmingham Water Works got 200,000 meters. That's $70 million just to buy the meter. So compare that to your sewer situation, compare that to your stormwater situation. They would have to pay $70 million just to buy the meter, and all I'm saying, it should have been done years ago, but I'm saying it's not a solution now. You can't go up there and hit a switch and all of a sudden you got 200,000 meters. $70 million to buy them, you got to pay somebody to program them, you got to pay people to put them in, so we talking about $100 million. I guess y'all could fix your sewer system twice with that much money. So that's what we dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ross?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good presentation. Let me say this, I really appreciate my counsel from District Nine. I hope that Council District Eight picked up what my counsel District Nine said. When you put people on the board, make sure you get someone from the community that love their community, that work for their community, then you won't have all that problem. Got a couple of things here. The first thing is, I hope that when y'all tear down Scott School, I hope y'all can be able to put us a local grocery store there when you tear down Scott School. I think it's, if you do the economic feasibility, I think it'd be a good spot for a grocery store. Now, there are five cities in the state of Alabama. Now, there are five cities in the state of Alabama that where all the trains intersect, and Birmingham is one of. I served with the MPO, and we got this bill passed through the legislature where we would put all of together, because at that particular time, the mayor of Mississippi was the president of our organization. Thirdly, I presented y'all today with a petition, and I'm hoping that each city council will sign their petition, go on board, saying that they want to have the water assets transferred back to the city. I'm hoping that you will sign it. I've given that petition out three weeks ago. I gave it to my council, oh, in District 9, and I don't believe anyone have signed it. So, please, ma'am, please, sir, take initiative and sign this petition we got. We have done this before, and we can do it now, and we can eliminate all these senior citizens losing their property, because if, if we don't, if we don't, we going to wind up, everybody in Birmingham going to have a lien on their property because they cannot afford to pay their water and sewer deal. Thirdly, I had went before the city council, I believe Council Abbott was the only one here. We put up a historical sign over there in front of Gray Mount Elementary School. That sign cost us almost $3,000, and it took us three years to put the sign up. I goes through there a couple of weeks ago, and now someone have destroyed the sign. The sign represent Mr. James Armstrong. Mr. James Armstrong's two sons was the two sons that integrate Gray Mount School, and we have a historical sign over there. I have done old 50th March, 50th March with Mr. James Armstrong to have that historical sign put up there. So, I'm hoping that the city council will, will help me, help me raise the other $3,000 to have that sign restored back, back up there in front of Gray Mount, Gray Mount Elementary School. And lastly, I was kind of real proud of the city council today, when you all going to build 52 new houses in Pratt City, because if you, if you notice that when you begin to receive your federal dollars, all your federal dollar is based up on the number of rooftop you have in the city. Also, you increasing your, your tax base in the city of Birmingham, so I was very appreciative that y'all doing this, because this, this how you get your federal dollars. Again, please, y'all today, sign this petition, and I was picking it up on my way out the door.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
At this time, councilors, we entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salute. All in favor, let me know by second.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Listen, man, it's Thanksgiving. You know, we just out here earlier this morning trying to do a little good. Did y'all get a chance to get one? Y'all did? Okay, go all the way down to the lady in the blue. Giving out some hams to people in the ham, and, yeah, just trying to, trying to spread some holiday cheer. It's good and cold, I can't feel none of my fingers, but it's all for a good cause, so it's beautiful. How, how y'all doing?
We at two houses.
Listen, y'all ain't got to show me no, no ID, Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore? I remember you.
Thank you.
So, listen, thank y'all so much.
God bless y'all.
Yeah, God bless y'all. It means a lot. Hey, however many, however many they need, like, it means a lot. I mean, you know, we watch the news all the time, we see a lot of the tragic and horrific things that happen, and to a certain extent, you, you don't even feel like there's a thing called community anymore, and so how y'all doing? It's just a beautiful thing to give anyway. Like, I think, you know, people get excited around Thanksgiving and Christmas, because it's the time of giving, and so we're just keeping with that same spirit, just trying to make sure that people have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, and they, they can enjoy their time with their families. So, we're just excited about it.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.